Okay, I'd like to call this meeting to order. Please join me in the flag slip. Okay, at this time I'll be swearing in for the board members. I demerit Gonzales do solemnly swear.
I demerit do solemnly swear.
That I will support the Constitution of the United States and the Constitution of the State of New Jersey.
That I will support the Constitution of the United States and the Constitution of the State of New Jersey.
And that I will bear truth, faith, and allegiance to the same.
And I will bear truth, faith, alliance to the same.
And to the governments established in the United States. And in this state.
And in this state.
Under the authority of the people.
Under the authority of the people, so help me God.
I demerit Gonzales.
I demerit Gonzales.
Do solemnly swear.
Do solemnly swear.
That I possess the qualifications prescribed by law.
That I possess the qualifications prescribed by the law.
For the office of member of Board of Education.
For the office of the member of Board of Education.
And that I am not disqualified.
And that I am not disqualified.
As a voter pursuant to RS 19:4-1.
And that I am not disqualified as a voter pursuant to RS 194-1.
Nor disqualified due to conviction of a crime or offense listed in NJ SA 18A 12-1.
Nor disqualified due to the conviction of a crime or offense listed in New Jersey SA 18A 12-1.
And that I will faithfully and impartially and justly perform all the duties of the office according to the best of my abilities so help me God.
And that I will faithfully and impartially and justify.
Justly.
Justly, sorry, perform all the duties of the office according to the best of my ability, so help me God. Congratulations. Thank you.
I Denise Mejia.
I Denise Mejia.
Do solemnly swear.
Do solemnly swear.
That I will support the Constitution of the United States.
That I will support the Constitution of the United States.
And the Constitution of the State of New Jersey.
And the Constitution of the State of New Jersey.
And that I will bear true faith and allegiance.
And that I will bear true faith and alliance.
To the same, to the governments.
To the same and to the governments.
Established in the United States and this state.
Established in the United States and this state.
Under the authority of the people, so help me God.
Under the authority of the people, so help me God.
I Denise Mejia.
I Denise Mejia.
Do solemnly swear.
Do solemnly swear.
That I possess the qualifications prescribed by law.
That I possess the qualifications prescribed by law.
For the office of member of Board of Education.
For the office of member of Board of Education.
And that I am not disqualified as a voter pursuant to RS 19:4-1.
And that I am not disqualified as a voter pursuant to RS 19:4-1.
Nor disqualified due to conviction of a crime or offense listed in NJ SA 18A 12.
Nor disqualified due to conviction of a crime or offense listed in NJ SA 18A :12/1.
And that I will faithfully and impartially and justly perform all the duties of that office according to the best of my abilities, so help me God.
And that I will faithfully and impartially and justly perform all the duties of that office according to the best of my ability, so help me God.
Congratulations.
Thank you.
I Adam Parkinson.
I Adam Parkinson.
Do solemnly swear.
Do solemnly swear.
That I will support the Constitution of the United States.
That I will support the Constitution of the United States.
And the Constitution of the State of New Jersey.
And the Constitution of the State of New Jersey.
And that I will bear true faith and allegiance to the same.
And that I will bear true faith and allegiance to the same.
And to the governments established in the United States and in this state.
And to the governments established in the United States and this state.
Under the authority of the people, so help me God.
Under the authority of the people, so help me God.
I Adam Parkinson.
I Adam Parkinson.
Do solemnly swear.
Do solemnly swear.
That I possess the qualifications prescribed by law.
That I possess the qualifications prescribed by law.
For the office of member of Board of Education.
For the office of member of Board of Education.
And that I am not disqualified as a voter pursuant to RS 19:4-1.
And that I am not disqualified as a voter pursuant to RS 19:4-1.
Nor disqualified due to conviction of a crime or offense listed in NJ SA 18A 12.
Nor disqualified due to conviction of a crime or offense listed in NJ SA 18A :12-1.
And that I will faithfully and impartially and justly perform all the duties of that office according to the best of my abilities, so help me God.
And that I will faithfully and impartially and justly perform all the duties of that office according to the best of my ability, so help me God.
Congratulations. I Stephen Rotis.
I Stephen Rotis.
Do solemnly swear.
Do solemnly swear.
That I will support the Constitution of the United States.
That I will support the Constitution of the United States.
And the Constitution of the State of New Jersey.
And the Constitution of the State of New Jersey.
And that I will bear true faith and allegiance to the same.
And that I will bear true faith and allegiance to the same.
And to the governments established in the United States and this state.
And to the government established in the United States and this state.
Under the authority of the people, so help me God.
Under the authority of the people, so help me God.
I Stephen Rotis.
I Stephen Rotis.
Do solemnly swear.
Do solemnly swear.
That I possess the qualifications prescribed by law.
That I possess the qualifications prescribed by law.
For the office of a member of Board of Education.
For the office of member of the Board of Education.
And that I am not disqualified as a voter pursuant to RS 19:4-1.
And that I am not disqualified as a voter pursuant to RS 19-19:4-1.
Nor disqualified due to conviction of a crime or offense listed in NJ SA 18A :12-1.
Nor disqualified due to conviction of a crime or offense listed under NJ SA 18A :12-1.
And that I will faithfully and impartially and justly perform all the duties of that office according to the best of my abilities, so help me God.
And that I will faithfully and impartially and justly perform all the duties of that office according to the best of my ability, so help me God. Congratulations.
This time do you roll call? Trustee Acosta?
Yes.
Trustee Chang?
Here.
Trustee Gonzalez?
Present.
Trustee Mejia?
Here.
Trustee Palermo?
Here.
Trustee Parkinson?
Yes.
Trustee Dr. Pizzatelli?
Here.
Trustee Portillo?
Yes.
Trustee Rotis?
Here.
The New Jersey Open Public Meeting Law was enacted to ensure the right of the public to have advance notice of and to attend meetings at any body, at any public body which business affecting their interests is discussed and acted upon. In accordance with the provisions of this act, the school business administrator, board secretary has cause notices of this meeting to be sent to the following, announcing time and place of agenda, etc., the Jersey Journal, the administrative bulletin board, and the district's website. At this point, the Board will elect officers of president and of vice president of the Board. Before we begin, I will read the policy, which is also in Board Docs. If the Board wants to follow along, they can, in Board Docs. I posted the policy as an attachment. So we move the motion to open the nominations. You'll see an attachment there if you want to follow along. But I'll read, it's Policy 0152, which is Board Officers. And the Board of Education is organized by electing one of its members as president and another as vice presidents. Any member may place a member's name and nomination. A second is not required. Election for each office will be conducted by a roll call vote when the nominations for that office are closed. The candidate receiving the votes of the majority of the Board members present in voting will be elected to office. In the event no candidate receives the majority of the votes cast, a second election shall be conducted between the two candidates receiving the highest number of votes. Voting shall take place by a verbal roll call. Officers shall serve for one year term until their respective successors are elected and shall qualify. But if the Board shall fail to hold them, the organization meeting where the Board are to elect Board Officers as prescribed by New Jersey Statute of Amendment 18A :15-1, the county superintendent shall point from among the members of the Board a vice president and a president and/or a vice president. A president or vice president who refuses to perform the duties imposed upon him or her by law may be removed by majority vote of all the members of the Board. In the event the office of the president or vice president shall become vacant, the Board shall within thirty days thereafter fill the vacancy for the unexpired term. If the Board fails to fill the vacancy within such time, the county superintendent shall fill the vacancy for the unexpired term. Are there any questions about the bylaw?
Yes, Board Secretary, I have a question for the Board Secretary and the Board Attorney. The previous Board Attorney gave us an interpretation of a roll call vote. So I would appreciate if you could give us the definition of a roll call vote.
Well, the definition of a roll call vote would mean specifically the BA or the person presiding over the meeting would call out each member and have him perform I or N for that particular nominee. That's the roll call.
So I just want to be clear that we're going to vote on the order the nominations came in and we're going to vote per nominee?
Correct.
Okay. I just want to let you know your predecessor made us all vote individually.
Okay.
And, you know, I looked up Robert's rules and I feel it's exactly what you just said. We're going to do up-down depending on when the nominees came in.
Okay, so if there's no other questions regarding the bylaw or the procedure, the first thing that we'll do is just make a motion to open the nominations for the position of president of the Board of Education. So this is just to open the nominations. So may I have a motion?
Motion.
May I have a second?
Second motion.
Okay, so right now you'll be voting on to open the nominations solely. Trustee Acosta?
Yes.
Trustee Chang?
Yes.
Trustee Gonzalez?
Yes.
Trustee Mejia?
Yes.
Trustee Palermo?
Yes.
Trustee Parkinson?
Yes.
Trustee Dr. Pizzatelli?
Yes.
Trustee Portillo?
Yes.
Trustee Rotis?
Yes.
Okay. At this point, we'll have, I'll ask for a motion to nominate the person for the president for the office.
I'd like to nominate Adam Parkinson.
I would like to nominate someone as well. I'd like to nominate Stephen Rotis for president of the Board. I think he's competent. I think that he was a good president last year. And I would love to see him as president of the Board once again.
I nominate Dr. Pizzatelli. She is by far the most qualified individual to serve as president. She has been on this Board longer than anyone. She has forty years' experience in the relevant field. And she has a doctoral degree in the relevant field. And she has served as a district assistant superintendent. She has been bypassed in the past for far less qualified candidates as president. And I think if this Board wants to do the right thing, it should nominate the person most qualified.
Unless they'd like to nominate Joan Palermo?
I'm sorry?
I'd like to nominate Joan Palermo.
Okay, are there any other nominations? Seeing none, at this point we'll have a motion to close the nominations. May I have a motion to just close the nominations? And may I have a second?
Second motion.
Trustee Acosta? This is just to close the nominations. Trustee Chang?
Yes.
Trustee Gonzalez?
Yes.
Trustee Mejia?
Yes.
Trustee Palermo?
Yes.
Trustee Parkinson?
Yes.
Trustee Dr. Pizzatelli?
Yes.
Trustee Portillo?
Yes.
Trustee Rotis?
Yes.
At this point, we'll vote on, I guess just going in order after we receive them. And the first person who receives the majority of the members, which would be five members, will become president. So the first one we received was Adam Parkinson nominated by Matthew Chang. And I'll call your name and you'll tell me whether your vote is yes or no. Okay, so this is Adam, Adam Parkinson for president. Trustee Acosta?
No.
Trustee Chang?
Yes.
Trustee Gonzalez?
No.
Trustee Mejia? Trustee Palermo?
No.
Trustee Parkinson?
No.
Trustee Dr. Pizzatelli?
Yes.
Trustee Portillo?
No.
Trustee Rotis?
No.
Only two yeses and seven no's, so that motion do not carry. The next one is Stephen Rotis nominated by Mr. Parkinson. Trustee Acosta?
Yes.
Trustee Chang?
No.
Trustee Gonzalez?
Yes.
Trustee Mejia?
Yes.
Trustee Palermo?
No.
Trustee Parkinson?
Yes.
Trustee Dr. Pizzatelli?
No.
Trustee Portillo?
Yes.
Trustee Rotis?
Yes.
Congratulations, Mr. Rotis. Now we'll repeat the same process for the vice president of the Board. So at this point, we'll open the nominations for the vice president. So this is just a motion to open the nominations for the vice president. Trustee Acosta, have you, or may I have a motion? A motion to open the nominations for the vice president.
Motion.
May I have a second?
Second.
Okay, Trustee Acosta?
Yes.
Trustee Chang?
Yes.
Trustee Gonzalez?
Yes.
Trustee Mejia?
Yes.
Trustee Palermo?
Yes.
Trustee Parkinson?
Yes.
Trustee Dr. Pizzatelli?
Yes.
Trustee Portillo?
Yes.
President Rotis?
Yes.
At this point, we'll accept nominations.
I would like to nominate someone. I'd like to nominate Trustee Parkinson.
Are there any other nominations?
I nominate Dr. Pizzatelli.
Any other nominations?
I'd like to nominate Trustee Palermo.
I'm sorry, you'd like to nominate?
I'd like to nominate Trustee Palermo.
Any other nominations? Seeing none, may I have a motion to close the nominations?
Motion.
May I have a second?
Second.
And now we're just voting on to close the nominations. Trustee Acosta? To just close the nominations?
Oh, yes.
Yes. Trustee Chang?
Yes.
Trustee Gonzalez?
Yes.
Trustee Mejia?
Yes.
Trustee Palermo?
Yes.
Trustee Parkinson?
Yes.
Trustee Dr. Pizzatelli?
Yes.
Trustee Portillo?
Yes.
President Rotis?
Yes.
At this point, we'll vote on, the first one that came in was Adam Parkinson by President Rotis. Trustee Acosta?
Yes.
Trustee Chang?
No.
Trustee Gonzalez?
Yes.
Trustee Mejia?
Yes.
Trustee Palermo?
No.
Trustee Parkinson?
Yes.
Trustee Dr. Pizzatelli?
Yes.
Trustee Portillo?
Yes.
Trustee Rotis?
Yes.
Congratulations, Mr. Palermo. Moving on with the agenda. There's only a few items on the agenda for board approval this evening. The first one is the acceptance of the result, the election results that were provided by the county Board of Elections. May I have a motion? Are there any, if there's any questions, they'll be asked. May I have a motion?
Motion.
May I have a second?
Second.
Any questions or discussion? Trustee Acosta?
Yes.
Trustee Chang?
Yes.
Trustee Gonzalez?
Yes.
Trustee Mejia?
Yes.
Trustee Palermo?
Yes.
Vice President Parkinson?
Yes.
Trustee Dr. Pizzatelli?
Yes.
Trustee Portillo?
Yes.
President Rotis?
Yes.
The second item is the readoption of the Board bylaws and policies of the Board of Education. May I have a motion?
Motion.
May I have a second? Any comments or questions? Seeing none, Trustee Acosta?
Yes.
Trustee Chang?
Yes.
Trustee Gonzalez?
Yes.
Trustee Mejia?
Yes.
Trustee Palermo?
Yes.
Vice President Parkinson?
Yes.
Trustee Dr. Pizzatelli?
Yes.
Trustee Portillo?
Yes.
President Rotis?
Yes.
The next item is to set the meeting dates for future meetings. The only one that has, that needs to really be fixed is next Wednesdays. And that's because, and I mentioned this to the Board members before at previous meeting, that the Q-SAC is due the next day, on the fifteenth. We must file it with the calendar, so that was the reason why we have to have it next Wednesday, the next Wednesday. But I listed in the motion, I listed the second Wednesday of each month, except there was a couple conflicts. I think during the Easter break, there might have been a conflict. And there was one other conflict. But otherwise, they're always the second Wednesday of the month. And the organization meeting by statute has to be within the first seven days of the calendar year. So that's, I kept that on the Wednesday, and the first Wednesday was the sixth of January. So if there's any questions or if any Board members want to modify the schedule, I guess now's the time to speak because I need to publicize.
Yeah, so the previous Board, we had been discussing about the start time of the meetings. So we decided to leave it up to the new incoming Board to decide whether or not 5:30 was convenient to everyone. Personally, I prefer that we move it back just a little bit. It's either six or 6:30. But this is up to the pleasure of the Board. Move the start time of the meeting from 5:30, I find that a bit early.
I also want to make a comment, maybe for the reorganization of the meetings. Hopefully, we could have our voting done first and then have everybody else open to the public. So that way, there's no like open and then a break and then come back. Just go from.
I second that.
But then that way, you could also have a better convenient time.
Wait, can you?
You get what I'm saying?
Can you just repeat again?
Okay, so you know how we start? We have to open to the public?
Yes.
And then you guys take a break, do what you got to do, and you come back and then open it up again? Do you follow me?
Yes.
All right, so instead of doing that, we do what we have to do first. You know, take that, take that and finish that and then open it to the public. They used to do it back then when the old Board members used to run Western.
Yeah, we actually just changed the bylaw to reflect nearly what you said. What we, what we had been discussing previously was that we start at 5:30. And as you mentioned, unfortunately, we spent a lot of time back in executive session discussing personnel, legal, et cetera matters. So I was saying that we should advertise to people that we're going to come back out here at about seven o'clock or so. So we, the latest version of the meeting order states that we start, and then we just vote to go into executive session. Go into executive session. We tell everyone, hey, we're going to go back for X amount of time. And we come back and then we just go right through the agenda. That's the latest version of the agenda. So that's where we are right now. We passed that, we passed that bylaw, I think, three meetings.
Yeah, that's something to give even like a consideration, maybe for the future. I know you started, you're saying for a different start time. Like for instance, like next week, I started my first day of class back in the semester. So, but then after that, we'll be okay on the Wednesdays. You get me? So the time, at least for me, it's not an issue. I'm just saying maybe for later, for different meetings, we could have a different structure, just because the break, you know, that is too.
In order to change the structure of the meeting, we have to revisit the bylaw.
That's fine. I'm just putting it out on the table so everybody knows. Thank you.
Yes, sir.
Would I, as you, as you start, do you want to keep them at 5:30 or move it to six or 6:30? It's the pleasure of the Board.
Right now, we were just discussing, I mean, we can, I previously, we had voted and changed the bylaw. I discussed this with Mr. Fanchetta previously. So if you have suggestions on that, you know, we read the bylaw twice and then we follow that structure. But right now, the suggestion that I had was to start, the actual start time to be moved back a little bit. And then, like I was saying, we can advertise that the public meeting starts at eight. So for example, we start, right now, we're starting at 5:30. I had said before, the public meeting starts at about seven, depending on whatever's on our agenda. So I was asking for the Board to move it back, move the start time to six. And then we tell people, we're going to come back out at eight. And if we don't come back out at eight, we tell people, we're going to be a little late then.
Perhaps we should just discuss this at the agenda resolution meeting that we have?
Well, we're supposed to go ready in public.
You know, we have two, two new Board members who are new to the structure and might not understand exactly what they're trying to, you know, get done, Matthew. So probably, if you reach out to, you know, we should probably talk, I'm saying, another day and continue with the meetings, continue with the agenda that we have in place right now.
Board Attorney, can you clarify that as you approach the meeting?
Pardon me a second. I think just to be clear, I think the issue is you, the meetings as they currently stand start at 5:30. And then you open up to the public at seven, correct?
I mean, that's not, that's not per se true. It depends how long we're in, we're in executive session. So there's no particular time where we actually do come out. It all depends.
Okay, well, the advice would be as follows. All Board meetings must start no later than eight, 8:00 p.m. at night. So if you are in fact going to move the start time back, you have to come out at eight o'clock. You have a, excuse me, you have a right to reconvene back into exec later on in the meeting and then come back out again to close. But you have to start the meeting no later than eight. So the Board must decide whether or not it's in fact going to move the start time back of its executive session, which would affect its public.
You know, right now, what I think this is causing is even more confusion to the parents or like school districts, Matthew. And we keep on changing it and we talk about changing it at every meeting. And I think we should stick to something that we just got approved because you, you know, we wanted to give it a shot, something that you recommended. So let's stick to this, at least in the next couple minutes.
Board Attorney, I'd just like you to clarify what an open public meeting is, perhaps to the Board members as well. I had stated that the Board is supposed to be deliberating in public.
Should we have the attorney clarify that, Matthew, or?
Well, we're supposed, like I said, we're supposed to be deliberating in public. I mean, you're asking us to go back for a resolution meeting to discuss this. And I'm saying, this is a full Board. We only have power when this full Board is together. And we're discussing this as a Board, so I don't really see what the issue is.
I would just like to continue with the agenda we have at hand, Matthew. That's all, that's just, that's what I, that's my recommendation.
Is there any other desire by any Board members to move the start time? Okay, then I guess with that in mind, then the schedule stands as posted in the resolution that you received. May I have a motion?
Motion.
May I have a second? Trustee Acosta?
Yes.
Trustee Chang?
No.
Trustee Gonzalez?
Yes.
Trustee Mejia?
Yes.
Trustee Palermo?
Yes.
Vice President Parkinson?
Yes.
Trustee Dr. Pizzatelli?
Yes.
Trustee Portillo?
Yes.
President Rotis?
Yes.
Yes.
Okay, there's one more resolution that we have, is board member travel. The reason why we had to put this on at the last minute is some of the travels on this Saturday and, I think, next week, Monday or Tuesday next week. Urgency for board members for travel. Is there any questions by any board members regarding this? Seeing none, may I have a motion?
Motion.
May I have a second?
Second.
Trustee Acosta? It's for board members for travel to attend New Jersey School Board events. We had to add it because of the timeliness of it, that two of the travels are taking place this Saturday.
Can you, can we, can we transfer for next meeting?
You can't, because by law, travel has to be pre-approved by the board, if this board does not want to take action on it tonight, then these two members cannot attend the travel on Saturday.
Yes.
So your vote is yes.
Yes.
Thank you. Trustee Chang?
Pass.
Trustee Gonzalez?
Yes.
Trustee Mahia?
Yes.
Trustee Palermo?
Yes.
Vice President Parkinson?
Yes.
Trustee Dr. Pizzatelli?
Yes.
Trustee Portillo?
Yes.
President Rotis?
I vote yes for both the board members, but I'm staying for myself.
Mr. Chang?
I've seen.
All right, at this point, we'll open the floor up for public comments. I'm sorry. Oh, I'm sorry, did I get your vote just before? You voted yes. At this time, we'll open the floor for public comment. In accordance with West New York Bylaw 0167, Public Participation of Board Meetings adopted April twenty second, two thousand nine, each participant shall be limited to three minutes of duration, please state your name and address for the record when you approach the microphone.
Francisco Ferro, fifty-two oh six, Berderrama, New West New York, first and foremost, Happy New Year to everybody, and congratulations to Denise, Damaris, Steven, and Adel. And I just want to throw two cents in on the idea Denise brought up from the residents' point of view. She brought up a great idea, we've actually been at this for months and mentioning this, and a lot of parents, a lot of people that attend the meetings have complained about this. We come to the meeting, and I'll give you our perspective from our shoes, a stand, sit out here. We come to the meeting, the meeting starts, lasts for ten, fifteen minutes, you guys go to executive session, that may last as little as forty-five minutes, up to four or five hours. I've been here for a four or five hour wait, and eighty percent of the parents that were concerned now left, because it's ten o'clock at night, and they have things to do, they have children to put to sleep, and so forth. What Denise brought up is, if you guys could handle your executive session before the meeting opens up to the public. You come out to the public, you discuss everything in front of the people, you open up to the public, the people get to discuss, you know, what they have to say, and, you know, it's just a little bit more convenient. If you want more parent involvement, if you want more community involvement, that's what it's going to take, because not a lot of people could just sit around and wait for a meeting to come back and not have an idea when it's coming back. Because sometimes it takes an hour, sometimes it's two, sometimes it's three. So if, just for example, if you guys could start your meeting at six o'clock, you stay in executive session to eight o'clock, and that's when you advertise to us that the meetings are going to start, eight o'clock you come out, you've handled all your private business, and the meeting flows, finishes at nine, ten, whatever, but we don't have to sit around and just wait to the meeting that we don't know when it's going to come back, comes back. That's all, thank you.
Is there anyone else who wishes to address the board?
Dorine Ariema, sixty twenty-five Hudson Avenue. Happy New Year, everybody, congratulations to all. I have a question, maybe a couple of them. The schools that were renamed, Albio Series and Robert Menendez, how did that come to bed? Was it like a decision proposed by the board, like who proposed it, and then who voted to have those schools named after those men, and why were they named after those men? Anybody? Nobody has a, nobody can answer that for me? Who put to the floor the naming of the new number four school, the Albio Series School, and the naming of the new number three school, the Robert Menendez School?
Can I respond?
I'm asking somebody to answer me.
Okay, as I understand it, based on a discussion we had a couple of months ago, anybody could put up anyone's name, and then the board votes on it. Those two schools were renamed, I know, prior to my election.
Well, I was, the question is before anybody was sitting here.
Most people who were.
All right, maybe I should put my first question, anybody on this board, was there anybody on this board at the time?
Probably one member, Acosta.
Mr. Acosta, he was the only member at the time, who, when this was named? Can you tell me the reason why?
No, I don't remember, just this day I was here.
To my recollection, it was just put on, and we were just told to vote, I have no clue.
Who told you to vote, who put it on, and who told you to vote?
I have no idea, the superintendent does the agenda.
The superintendent doesn't put it out.
Who put it up, is what, nobody can answer that question. Can I give you something to consider then? Consider the fact that he's named, two new schools after two gentlemen, one who had really nothing to do with West New York at all, despite the fact that Bob Menendez and I are friends, still don't see why he got a school named after him. If you're going to consider naming a school after someone, what was wrong with naming the school after Anthony M. Dafino, former mayor Anthony M. Dafino? The man was a public servant for twenty-four years at this town, he was a pre-holder, he was a county surrogate. This man and his administration gave you the annex number one, gave you number two, gave us a rec center, which no longer is a rec center, but he gave us a roller rink, then the rec center, he gave us a new center for the seniors. I mean, his administration went out and got grants to ensure the cops were always at their right amount that was supposed to be for this town, and the guy's got nothing to show for it, for a school. I mean, you named a school after two men who are still, I mean, thank God, alive, but there's always the fact that, what happens if one of those gentlemen does something illegal?
Mrs. Ariema, I'm sorry, your time is up.
Well, thank you, President Rotis, I appreciate that, I'll continue this next week. Maybe you'll have some answers for me, I just hope.
Is there anyone else who wishes to address the board?
All right, thank you very much, Cosmos Erlo, one sixteen Sixty Fifth Street, West New York, New Jersey. It's a great honor and privilege to be here this evening, multiple levels, first and foremost, as a lifelong resident of the town of West New York. Secondly, representing part of the thirty-second Legislative District, Assemblywoman Angelica Jimenez is here tonight, and I'm sure she'll say a couple of words, but on behalf of Senator Nick Sacco, Assembly Speaker Vinnie Prieto, and herself, I'd like to congratulate the new members, newly sworn in members of this board this evening, congratulations on your recent election to this board, and we have a lot of confidence that you're going to be doing the right thing for the town of West New York and the future children of this town. So your influence is going to go a long way for what happens for the children here in West New York, and we congratulate you and wish you the very best in office. In addition to that, I have ceremonial resolutions that I'll ask the Assemblywoman to help present to the four new members of this board, recognizing your contributions and your dedication to the town of West New York. And third, and lastly, I'd just like to offer my personal congratulations, as a former member of this board, I had the distinct honor of serving four years on this board, two years as board president, and it was an absolutely wonderful experience. And I hope you have the exact same experience, I hope you get to enjoy it as much as I did, and I hope you do the very best for the town of West New York, and if I can ever be of any assistance, I offer you my personal support to each and every one of you. So, thank you very much, and I'd appreciate it, Mr. President, we're here to commission if we can have Assemblywoman Jimenez come up and say a couple of words.
Thank you, Cosmos. I'll make it short, I won't make it even two minutes. Congratulations to all, and like I said, and like Cosmos said, on behalf of Senator Nick Sacco, Assembly Speaker Vincent Prieto, and myself, these resolutions are something of an honor, and I know and I have faith that you guys will do a fabulous job. You are sitting in a very, it's a difficult seat to take, and it's a difficult position, but I have all the faith that the people of the town that voted you in will have that faith. So, the best of luck to all, and continue, like Cosmos said, we both sat on there, we both sat on that board, so if you have any questions or any, anything at all, feel free to reach out to us. It's, it is, it is a blessing, but it is also sometimes a very difficult position when, when questions are asked that, you know, like Ms. Ariema said, Anthony M. Dafino, we have so many, so many residents in this town that have given so much to our, our school system and to our community, including our mayor, our former mayor Albio Series, now our congressman, and our senator Bob Menendez, that has contributed a lot to funding of our school systems. But anyway, thank you so much, and the best of luck to you all, and many blessings to all, and have a great New Year.
Mr. President, if I could take one more liberty, the mayor of West New York, Dr. Felix Roca, has entered the meeting, and I think it's appropriate that you recognize him at this point, say a couple of words.
Good evening, ladies and gentlemen, Mr. President, Mr. Falta. Ladies and gentlemen, my apologies, I was working, I got to work for a living, I do. I just wanted to say a couple of words just to congratulate the new members who just joined the board. I'm extremely proud of all of you, and I know you're going to do a fantastic job. I know Speaker Vinnie Prieto has some proclamations to give, but I do promise you that you're going to get one from us at our town meeting, so I wanted to give all the glory here to Mr. Cosmos Erlo, and Speaker Vinnie Prieto, and Angelica Jimenez. So you'll be getting that, hopefully, in the next town meeting. But again, it's a challenging job, I'm into education as a physician, you guys know that, and you have a lot on your shoulders to meet, you know, what we've been doing here in West New York. Mr. Falta, we're going to miss you, come June, you're leaving. But I'm sure you're going to be around, so, thank you. So, having said that, guys, thank you so much, and congratulations to all of you, okay? Thank you.
Hi, Carrie Colain, two thirty-five Fifty Eighth Street, West New York. Congratulations to the new board members, the president, vice president. I'm a teacher here in the middle school, as most of you are aware, we have the fashion show coming up for the baby with leukemia with Norbert Stoma. I have some tickets here, any of you who are looking to attend. Also, I'd like to echo what Dorine said, there should be a school named after, named after M. Dafino, because to many of us, he will always be the mother of West New York, even though we've had mayors after that. He's done a lot for the town with the recreation, with the kids, he was always about the kids, and the school system is about the kids. Thank you.
Is there anyone else who wishes to address the board?
That wasn't, that was, I'm sorry? Mrs. Ariema, there's only one, the public's allowed only one board member comment, purple, for public comments.
You cut her off.
I gave you actually, I gave you actually, Mrs. Ariema, I gave you actually over the three minutes, I allowed you extra times over the three minutes. No, he did not, he didn't. You can ask the board secretary, he did not, no one else went over his time, but I did give you, I did give you some extra time, Mrs. Ariema, I did.
Nah, I don't need to talk to Mike. Nobody should do what they do to people. Nobody, no matter who sits on the board, you cut people off when you're paying taxes in this town, paying school taxes in this town. This is not right. I don't care who's sitting on the board, it doesn't matter, friends with the gang, friends with the marines, friends with. If you just cut people off like that, it's just really rude, and unprofessional.
Is there anyone else who wishes to address the board?
Cheryl Smith, sixty-one twelve, Park Avenue Apartment E. I have a question, why is it Saint Joseph's, Harrell Bay, number six, and when it's age all, does not have a PTA or PTO when every other school does? And we're in January already.
Well, I could follow up, I mean, they had one last year, I don't understand, I'll have to check with the principal.
Uh, they did, but they didn't even bother doing anything, they had PTA supposedly, because I can remember, and they only had two meetings out of the whole school year.
I will follow up with the principal, because that's the responsibility of the school to formulate that. I assume they had one, because they had one all these other years.
Well.
But I will follow up with the school, absolutely.
It doesn't seem like they're going by any of the rules, because they don't even give the lunch menus to the students anymore. My son has no idea what he's getting for lunch every day. And it's not fair, because after lunches he doesn't like, so then he tries to try and get stuck to eating a piece of fruit and a milk till the end of the day.
I follow, I follow up with the school.
Well, I like to be informed of what's going on.
Is there anyone else who wishes to address the board? So now, no one else, we'll close out the section of the meeting.
I'm going to make a motion to move item ten before item twelve.
Just for clarification, really, it's a motion to move ten before twelve, or move eleven up. This way, board member comments can be given, and then afterwards, the public is free to leave. I mean, if you want to stay, great, but there'll be an ethics presentation after that, so at least this way you could hear board member comments, and then if you'd like, you can leave, and then there'll be an ethics presentation for the board.
Second.
I just want to be clear, Board Attorney, you're saying that there's a trustee who made a motion to change the order of the meeting, is that what you're saying?
Correct, he's just seeking to move.
And we're just changing, number which one?
Just changing the order from moving eleven up now.
Eleven, I have a German as eleven, is that, I have a German as number eleven?
I have a German as twelve, that's why. I have a German as 12, that's why. Basically, what we're doing is moving board of education member comments to now, and then they'll be followed by the special presentation.
Okay.
Okay, so trustee Acosta, yes? Trustee Chang?
No.
Trustee Gonzalez?
Yes.
Trustee Mejia?
Yes.
Trustee Palermo?
No.
Trustee Parkinson?
Yes.
Trustee Dr. Pizzatelli?
Yes.
Trustee Portillo?
Yes.
President Beras?
Yes.
Okay, at this time, we'll open the floor for board member comments.
Mr. Beras, I'd like to make a comment.
Go ahead.
In addition to congratulating all our new members, it's a pleasure to see new faces and people that are interested. I do have a comment that I would like to make in reference to the staff and the administration of school number two. Yesterday, I had someone from the community come to tell me about the excellent job the staff and the administration of that school did with regard to a fire alarm going off. And, you know, we may take for granted sometimes that, you know, students very easily are trained how to be dismissed from a classroom when the fire alarm goes off, but when you see it in action, and staffer at their lunch hour, and people see how they run to their students who are eating in the cafeteria, how everyone is on target and knowing exactly what to do in case there was a fire, and be outside in that cold weather, I think it's time to give a congratulations to the administration of that school and also the staff. For you as parents to know and to have that good feeling, and I know what it's like being a principal at one time in my career, it is so important for the little ones to know that they feel secure, and I know it sounds like, wow, but think about it if it was one of your children. And too often, the little things, they are not really that little, because they are the lives of the future, and they are your children, and some of them are your grandchildren. And you need to know that the people that they have hired here are doing above and beyond in many cases, and it's not only the little petty things that we need to talk about, but we need to congratulate those people. So, my kudos to staff number two, and I'm sure the staff of West New York. Thank you.
I would just like to express my optimism for the 2015 year. A lot of new board members since this time last year. When I came on in January of 2014, the only people that were here for Dr. Pizzatelli and trustee Acosta that are still here now, it's been such an honor to work with so many people from the past that I see here tonight, and I am just looking forward to working with this board and continuing to do what's right for the schools.
First and foremost, I want to thank everybody for coming here to our first board meeting of January. At the same time, I want to thank Frank, Cosmo, Angelica Jimenez, Mayor Roque, for those beautiful words of encouragement to continue on, as well as for Ms. Dorin. I apologize on behalf of the board for not being able to answer that question. Hopefully, we could diligently work to find that answer, as well as Ms. Cheryl with the Hope Food. I know Mr. Falta said he'll take, he'll look into that, so hopefully, that gets solved right away. And at the same time, like Mr. Parkinson said, I feel very optimistic with this board to work with everybody. I see so many familiar faces with the staff. I want to say thank you for you guys being here, thank you for all the support you guys give to the parents, to the teachers, to the students. I see like so many old classmates, also Leanne, or Mo, or Courtney, or who was my teacher, not my classmate, but still, thank you, everybody here for coming, and I look forward to working with all of you guys. Thank you.
May I speak, Mr. Beras?
Yes.
I just wanted to note for the record, I agree with Mr. Ferraro's comments about the public comments. I realized afterwards we'd be changing the law. I believe what he was asking for was that when we start the meetings, for there to be a public comment before we go back into executive session. I believe that was your suggestion? Yes?
No.
No? Were you asking? I thought that was your suggestion.
Public comments are closed, I'm sorry, Frank.
Start your meeting as soon as you can, handle your executive session business, come out to the public, open up the meeting, do whatever you do, open up a public comment, and finish the meeting with your time. So, basically, so this is-
All right, I just wanted to note, because I thought, I thought that he wanted to have public comment before executive session, but if that's not the case, then it's all right.
Mr. Ferraro, you had your public comment before, sorry.
I just wanted to introduce myself. My name's Matthew Chang. You know, I just wanted to say a few things about education. You know, my dad, who's 89 years old right now, you know, he lived through World War II. He was born in Hong Kong, and, you know, his generation of Chinese people were told after World War II, his parents passed away during World War II, his generation was told, you know, go out, get your PhDs, come back and help rebuild China. And, you know, he always told us that growing up, and I always remember him saying this, and, you know, it was his lifelong dream to get a PhD, come back and rebuild China. And, you know, he was a principal of a high school, got a master's degree at Taiwan, and he was lucky, when I look back on it, because I didn't know it at the time, but he was extremely lucky that at that time in the late 60s, Kennedy had opened up immigration to Asians, there was the Chinese Exclusion Act for a hundred years, and he was lucky, in fact, that the US Embassy happened to be in Taiwan at the time. At that time, we recognized Taiwan and not mainland China. And, you know, he walked into the embassy, and he said, "I want to go to America, and I want to, I want to get a PhD. So, you know, can I have a, can I have a student visa?" And the immigration officer says to him, "You want a student visa? You want a green card? We just opened up immigration to Asia." And he's like, "Okay, you know, I guess I want a green card." And, you know, he, he had always gotten scholarships all his life. He tells me that, you know, he sold his motorcycle, the last of his money, to get a plane ticket to come to the United States. He had been accepted to University of Southern California, so he flew over, he came, and when he got to California, he thought to himself, "Wow, this place is great, but I can't get a job." So, someone told him, "Hey, go to New York." And he's like, "Okay, I guess I'll go to New York." So, he spent the last of his money going to New York, and, you know, when he got to New York, my dad, the funny guy that he is, he went to Fordham University, and he went to admissions office, and he said, "I have this letter here from the University of Southern California. You guys don't think that you're any worse than University of Southern California, right?" And they looked at this guy, and they're like, "Uh, okay." And, you know, they took, they made him take the Miller Analogy test, and he passed, and he ended up getting a PhD in education. So, you know, unfortunately, he ended up teaching, he was a professor at Columbia Brooklyn College. Unfortunately, he was getting older at that point, and he thought to himself, you know, if I want to start a family, I don't necessarily want to wait around to get tenure. So, you know, I feel, I feel lucky that, in a sense, he sacrificed himself, decided to get a job with federal government, he worked for the Department of Education, Department of Culture, and finally with the Department of Housing and Urban Development for over 30 years, putting us all through college. And, you know, I always remember him saying, you know, "My dream is always to go back and help rebuild China." You know, unfortunately, the communists are still there. He always knew that, you know, if he were to go back, unfortunately, after waves and waves, you know, they would literally kill the intellectual people, so he never got to go back. But, you know, I just wanted to say that I have the utmost respect for educators, you know, that's why I'm here. You know, I'm here to support you guys. I hope that this board, this year, confines itself to policymaking, because that's what the sport is supposed to do, and the policies that we set are supposed to be the aspirations of the community. So, I hope that we can focus on that this year and leave all the other personnel matters behind, and just focus on policy and doing what's best for the district. Thank you.
I'm Martha, if I was here, I just want to take two seconds of your time, and just want to express a little bit of how I feel inside right now. First and foremost, I want to thank God for having all of us here as a part of the future for West New York and our children. But secondly, I want to give a shout out to the mayor for thanking, I want to thank you personally, on behalf of all of us, for believing in us and giving us the opportunity to assist you together with the town and the Board of Education for the future of our children. So, thank you so much for believing in us. Also, everyone that participated in making this possible, and I want to give a special thanks to my mother and my father who are sitting here. It's very, very humbling to say that, if it wasn't for them, I wouldn't be here today. So, thank you, Mom and Dad. My sister, my, my family, my friends, and everybody who supported us along the way. So, we're not going to fail you. We want to make sure that what you've instilled in us and believed in us, we follow that through as clearly as possible and as transparent as possible. So, thank you for, for supporting us at all times. Thank you.
I'd like to make, I'd like to say some comments. I'd like to thank our mayor, Dr. Roque, Angelica Jimenez, and Cosmo Cirillo for attending and for the kind words. I would also like to thank our campaign manager, Paolo Fonseca, for the great job working on, helping us, guiding us, in our process. I would also want, want to thank trustee Parkinson and the fellow board, and our fellow board members for, for the continued support and for the vote of confidence. Today, us newly four elected board members, so you can know that we made a promise that we will work relentlessly to do what's right for our school district. The results of this election were not just a coincidence. The results showed that the people of this town, they believe in us, they want to see changes, and they want to see results. The people of our town trust that us four elected officials, we will deliver. I'm looking forward to continue to serve this board for the next three years, and continue to do what's right for the parents, the staff of our school district, and the children of our school district. Thank you.
At this point, we'll begin the board comments, we'll begin the ethics training. Mr. Roth?
All right, good evening, everybody. Every year, the, anybody here, I could echo here. Every year, the Board of Education is required by law to have ethics training. Consult with the continuing education that every board member has to take, Governance One, Governance Two, and the other courses that you have to take. As part of this presentation, you are required to sign an acknowledgement, and you received it, it is part of your package. I'm going to ask everyone before they leave, do they, oh, they already signed? Okay. So, the, okay. I'm going to give a broad overview of the rules, a couple of cases that are relevant. If there are any questions that board members have in the future, Steven is our board attorney, Mr. Elstein is also our board attorney, as a partner of mine, Simon Elstein, feel free to contact them if you have any questions. I'm on staff, the board members who are new, feel free to contact me. I'll be more than happy to explain anything you have regarding an ethical dilemma, if there is. There are two ethics rules, it's NJSA 18A 12-24, and as part of it, there's two sections, there's the Code of Ethics, and then there is the School Officials' Prohibited Act and prohibited conduct. Most of the statute deals with financial issues, and I'm just going to go over them briefly, I'm going to go over them briefly. So, you could read the statute yourself, I'm not, I want to sit here and then spend an hour reading to you the presentation. But what's important to know that, as a board member, you neither, the board member or an immediate family member of the board can have any business interest or engage in any business transaction or professional activity with the board. The board members cannot utilize their position to get any specific unwarranted privileges that a known member of the public would have. We'll talk a bit, a little bit, that in the cases that are attached to my presentation. You can't have a direct financial or indirect financial arrangement with any business that would deal with the board, so in order not to prevent any change in your objectivity or your independence as a board member. And basically, the bunch of the statutes deal with that. You also can't get any personal financial gain as a member of the board. Lastly, for the, at least with the dealing with the statute, I just want to read this to you. Nothing shall prohibit any school official or member of the immediate family from representing themselves or themselves in negotiations or proceedings concerning his or other interests with the board. And that's important, because that rule keeps shifting, and we'll talk a little bit about the, the rules of governing, when you can vote, if it affects a family member with negotiations or contracts. I have a bunch of cases, I'm just going to go over a few of them briefly. I'm trying to highlight issues of procedure, issues of policy, what your role is as a board member. We do give a presentation, I believe, Mr. French, that we had someone from the school boards come in and give a presentation of the role of the board member. Last year, I'm assuming we'll do that again one more time, they give these seminars free, and there'll be a presentation sometime scheduled during the year. You'll also get this in Governance One and Governance Two, which the board members are required to get, and then in your continuing education. I'd like to start off with a Supreme Court case that most people don't really think of, and this is a case out of Cil City, it's a Supreme Court case from 2008. And basically, in that case, a board member whose child went to the school district sued the school district, because the child was not getting special education services through a 504 plan, and then thereafter through an IEP, an individual education plan. And one of the board members was, had an ethics complaint filed against him, to remove them from the board because of the fact that they had filed a complaint against the school district. The School Ethics Commission, there's a couple of boards that you deal with. One is the Commission, the Commissioner of Education. There's a separate entity called the School Ethics Commission, and they govern this area specifically, dealing with ethics, not the Commissioner, which then would take any appeals from the School Ethics Commission. And in this particular case, the School Ethics Commission stated that not every lawsuit that a board member brings against the board is, excuse me, is something that would disqualify you automatically from being on the board. If you're looking to protect the rights of, the educational rights of your student, your child, who's a student in the district, you have the right to do so. However, the Supreme Court did come out and say that if there is a claim for monetary relief, if there is demand for money back to you as a board member, that would automatically disqualify you from remaining on the board. Private action. Now, private action and public action, there's a very fine line, and the board members, you have to understand that the board acts as a collective, and when I speak to you on other matters- And when I speak to you on other matters, you'll... one of those matters is that we talk about whether the board is going to work as a committee of the whole, which is all of you working together, or in specific committees established by the board. You need to know that the board is a collective. You are a one member of a collective. You cannot act without the entire collective's approval. And where you get this fine line is, are you acting as a private citizen, which you have the right to do? However, you don't have the right to act as a private citizen if you're a member of this board where it implicates the board, the board policies, or actions that the board is willing to take. And that's where the fine line is. And there's a whole plethora now of cases that are coming out regarding social media, which I'll talk to you about in a couple of minutes. But the old way things used to happen with public and private action is if a board member got up and spoke at a, some kind of public meeting, public gathering, a town meeting, county meeting, and spoke as a board member or identified themselves as a board member without specifically saying, "I'm here as a private citizen, not as a board member." The other portion is, and this is what this case out of the Ethics Commission is, is Derrickson Shivani versus Sparta, where a board member wrote a letter to the editor. Okay? And in that, the case, the board member identified himself as a board member, put out policies that were before the board, and directed the, his whole commentary about board business. And the commissioner said that that was not private action. He was not a, acting as a private citizen, but acting as a board member. Now, there is a case that recently came down, a little later in your package, which I haven't talked about now, which is on page 10 of the presentation. It's Close versus Messenger on page 10. And that is dealing with postings on Facebook. I cannot implore, and I know your board attorney will say the same thing. I cannot implore each of you board members enough to say, "Be careful what you post on social media." It is no different than a letter to the editor. It's no different than going out with a megaphone on a street corner and making announcements. The issue with Facebook and other social media is whether or not it is considered to be an open public forum. Are you opening up yourself to the whole world, or is it just your friends? Is it just your clique? Is it just your group of individuals? And in Close, this is from July of 2013. And it's the most recent case that I could find. A board member had a complaint filed against him because he alleged that the complainant, Ms. Close, who was running for the school board, she was already a school, I remember, alleged that, the complaint said that she was unhinged, that the board member posted on a website that the person, the candidate running for the board, was an unhinged lunatic with a learning disability. The comment also talked about the political leanings of the complaint. And Mr. Messenger, the board member, said that his comments were perfectly legal because he had a first amendment right to say what he had to say. It was not part of any board business. This was a private comment that he was making about a candidate. And he said that, his allegation was that because it was on Facebook, only open to his friends, it was a limited forum, that message was as a private citizen and not as a board member. And also argued that the comments were campaign rhetoric and therefore not board business. The School Ethics Commission specifically, and looked into it very closely, specifically found that since Mr. Messenger, the board member, only had it open to friends, and there was no evidence that it was open to any other member of the public, they found that it was proper. I have to warn you, stay off of social media when it comes to issues with board business. No comments, because you're going to get an ethics complaint. The way ethics complaints work, by the way, is we are obligated by law to represent... the board is obligated to, as an entity, to represent the board members and offer a defense, meaning that we have to pay for it through our insurance company. These costs get attributed to the insurance, to our insurance rating. And if we have too many lawsuits, our insurance rating goes up, or we could be dropped from the insurance. So, these are things that you may not think about, but these are the ramifications of getting these ethics complaints filed against us. But the board, the SCC, the School Ethics Commission, actually looked into depth of who it was open to, whether it was friends, it was open to all the whole public. So, be careful with social media. One of the duties of the board, as trustee Chang said, is that you are responsible for the policymaking. You are responsible for planning. You are responsible for the appraisal of what's going on. You are not responsible for the day-to-day operations. And that, again, is on a case-by-case basis that the SCC looks at these things. However, in general, you are not permitted to go and speak to a teacher directly. You are, if a comment comes to you from the public, you are obligated to come and tell the superintendent of schools. The superintendent of schools will then conduct an investigation, and if it's warranted, report back to the board as a collective. Again, not on any individual member, but as a collective of what that complaint was and what was found, and what was the remedy.
Mr. Allen?
Yes, sir.
Mr. Jimenez, Mr. Jimenez, I believe, I'll give his own...
Oh, yeah, that's why, that's why, I'm sorry. Folks, that's why we said that there's no voting action now. So, this is my presentation. So, please, I'll give the floor.
Sorry, Mr. Roth.
Yes.
This is Mike. I'm assuming we could use the same mic? Okay. Like Cosmo said before, this is on behalf of Senator Sacco, Assemblyman Speaker Vincent Cretum, and myself. We'd like to present these resolutions to the newly elected members. And we have here for the President, Steven Rotas. Mr. Rotas?
This is for Denise here, Froning Center. Thank you.
Mr. Adam Parkinson. And Mr. Amaris Gonzalez. Congratulations to all, and I'm sure that you will continue doing the best you can for not only the kids, but the whole town as a whole. Thank you.
And as the smart elected officials get to leave. All right. So, I just want to talk about the policy plans, man. So, there's two cases that I want to talk about. One, I actually tried, which I'll talk about in a minute. But it'd be amazing to you what could constitute a simple deviation from your job of planning and issuing and making policy. In the general case, on page five, the Derrickson case, Derrickson Shivani, it's part of Sparta Board. Without going into too much detail on that case, the School Ethics Commission determined that a board member went beyond the making of policy planning and appraisal by creating interview documents that were specifically intended to take every... to measure every step of the interview process, leaving no discretion to the superintendent, little or no discretion to the superintendent of schools. You can't do it. You have to let your professional staff run the organization. Now, the case, if you want to flip to page seven, if you want to follow along, is the Yopit and Evans-Elfert Smith case out of Hillside. And in that case, it is almost, Dr. Smith did almost everything that you are not supposed to do in that case. One is, he was married to a building principal who used to tell him information about what was going on. So, he felt he had inside information. He would then go and talk to those teachers who were having complaints in the, in the, in the individual schools. He would walk into the schools and talk to the teachers. He would talk to them at A and P in Hillside. Violation number one. You can't do that. But also, he interfered with an investigation being conducted by the school district, by the superintendent of schools. Superintendent of schools, there was a senior prank that was conducted. Everybody, the seniors drove their car onto the track, drove around the track, and drove off. The superintendent and the building principal, who Dr. Smith was not enamored with either the superintendent of schools or the high school principal, possibly because he wanted his wife for the high school job, came out and said, "You're doing the investigation wrong," and went to the police chief as a board member and said, "Why do you think this is, why this is a prank?" After the superintendent had already considered the matter and reported to the board that the matter was closed. And when he testified in front of the School Ethics Commission at a full hearing, the superintendent testified that he warned the, Dr. Smith, the board member, not once, not twice, but three times, that he cannot interfere with other aspects of the running of the board. And so, it was very interesting. He was not re-elected. The School Ethics Commission sanctioned him anywhere and censured him for six months as a palate, even though he wasn't on the board. And that, that's a publisher's decision. So, you know, these matters are serious. They will stay, they will stay with you. The School Ethics Commission, make sure that the superintendent runs the show as your professional. And the administrative staff reports to him, not you. Basically, we all work for the superintendent of schools. The superintendent of schools works for you. One of the things that I always find interesting is when the, a board member would attack a teacher in public or at a board meeting, or attack another board member. I'm not sure if Steven's seen him too. He's been through the wars. I actually had a heated discussion at a board, at a board meeting that I attended. I came out, and the board members had fisticuffs, a big fight right there. Took four board members to pull these two women apart from each other, at which time, after that had calmed down, they then, both of them then attacked the female superintendent of schools in the parking lot after a board meeting. You can't, I mean, clearly, you can't assault a board, another board member, or you cannot assault a staff member. But you can't even criticize a staff member or the superintendent of schools without proper evidence. Okay? And in the case that I'm talking about now, is the David Hollander case, versus the Springfield Board of Education down by my office, where the board member made accusations about the superintendent of school and how he was running central office, saying that they were violating all kinds of policies. The board member did not have any substantiation or evidence of these allegations. He just made them. He made them public. And he was, he was brought up on charges for, by the superintendent of schools. Release of confidential information. There's a whole discussion about executive session. What happens, like Vegas, what happens in Vegas stays in Vegas. What happens in executive session stays in executive session. It cannot come out to the members of the public. The board secretary reads to you and every member of the public, when you go into executive session, that everything is confidential until such time it is no longer being confidential by the board and to be released by the board. If that means never, that means it can never be discussed outside of executive session. So, that includes negotiations. That includes for contracts, for collective bargaining. But there's other things. There's discussions, we're going to have a discussion on purchasing property. We can have a discussion about an issue with a, with a contract, which we will have shortly on another case that we'll talk about if it doesn't resolve. So, these are discussions, legal matters, special education matters, student discipline hearings. Those matters have to stay in executive session. They cannot come out. You'll learn, board members who are new, you will see personnel information with numbers for employees. That's in order to protect the rights and the confidentiality of the employees. You will see student numbers for children who receive special education services outside the district. That, it's that level that we take things here at the board to keep the confidences of students and keep confidences of the personnel. So, the case here, I'm not going to go over the Hollander case in depth, excuse me, the Valer Jordan case in depth. But just know that, you know, what happens in executive session stays in executive session. Second guessing the superintendent or attempting to usurp the responsibilities of the superintendent of schools will cause you to have all kinds of problems with the School Ethics Commission. And I went in depth before about, talked about the financial interest. And I've never had that here at this board. I've had it on other boards. I've had a board member try to offer his software to the board. He was a pure programmer, who offered the software free of charge to the board, not telling anybody that any updates and that would be used in the school for the kid, children, the pupils. The pupils would have to pay for additional use of the software. So, you just can't do that kind of stuff where you get a, some kind of financial gain. And in that case, that's on page 11, that's the Montero case. That's cited, that's a recent case in 2013 where... case in 2013, where it was determined that a board member voted on a contract for an auditor where the, one of the principals of the auditor and then the board member had another partnership. So, that was determined to be a financial gain, even though the board member was not gaining anything for that particular contract. That's my brief presentation, if anyone, I, I promised that this is issued, I would be 10 minutes, never give away a microphone. So, if there's anything further, I'll be more than happy to answer any questions. Otherwise, if you have any questions or comments as, as your life progresses on this board, feel free to contact me, feel free to contact the board attorney. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Moore. I'd like to ask the board secretary to request a motion to adjourn to re, the reorganization meeting.
Okay, may I have a motion?
Motion.
May I have a second?
A second.
Trustee Acosta?
Yes.
Trustee Chang?
Yes.
Trustee Gonzalez?
Yes.
Trustee Mejia?
Yes.
Trustee Palermo?
Yes.
Vice President Parkinson?
Yes.
Trustee Dr. Positelli?
Yes.
Trustee Portillo?
Yes.
President Rhodes?
Yes.
The meeting is adjourned.